Good afternoon. Welcome to the Mobile City Planning Commission meeting for November 21st, 2024. I'd like to take a moment to review our general operating procedures. This meeting is divided into two sessions, the public hearing session and then deliberation. In public hearing, an agenda item will be called, the applicant makes their presentation, commission members ask questions if any, and then members of the public can make their comments to the commission. Only four people may speak for an agenda item and four people against. Each speaker we ask is limited to five minutes, subject to questions by the commission. And at one minute, a speaker will hear a warning bell or a beep asking you to summarize your comments. After an opposition speaker has finished, an applicant is allowed a two-minute rebuttal. If you do intend to speak, come to the bottom of the stairs to the podium, speak into the microphone, please provide your name and address for our records. Direct all your comments to the commission only and not to the applicant, the staff, or the audience. After hearing all applications, the commission will go into deliberation where we will discuss each application with input from the staff but with no input from the audience. Commissioners will then vote on each application and the results of that vote can be learned from the planning department. If some issues arise during deliberation that were not addressed in public hearing, we have the discretion to allow additional comments in order to resolve those issues or call the application to be held over for discussion at a future meeting. Occasionally, a commissioner may recuse themselves from discussing and voting on an application. That does not mean they are directly involved with the application or the applicant, but depending on the circumstances, ethical rules require a recusal. If there is a recusal, a supernumerary will vote in their stead. A reminder to everyone that the Planning Commission makes final decisions on subdivisions with appeals of these decisions to the circuit court. The Planning Commission is strictly a recommending body for the rezonings, conditional use permits, and planned developments in Mobile. City Council makes the final decision on these applications and all appeals of the city council decisions are to the circuit court. At this time, do me a favor and turn your cell phones or other electronic devices to silent or vibrate. Commissioners and staff, make sure that your microphones are on. I'll call the roll myself, Jay Stubbs present, Mr. Kirk Matei.
Here.
Ms. Jennifer Denson. Ms. Surly Sessions, Mr. Larry Dorsey.
Here.
Mr. Chad Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Matt Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Nick Amberger.
Here.
Mr. Josh Woods, Mr. Harry Brisland. We do have a quorum and I'll entertain a motion to adopt or approve the November 21st agenda on which there are 10 items.
I'm here, by the way.
Oh, did I skip you? Kenny Nichols, he's here, I had him check mark, we already talked. I have a motion on the floor properly seconded for approval of the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, we'll move on to the agenda, it starts off with a holdover from the previous meeting. This is a dual application, a subdivision at 6301 Greelot Road along with a modification. Our notes here read that the Planning Commission should consider holdover requests until December 19th, I'm assuming that's on both items of the application, is that correct? Asking, okay, Mr. Byrd, that's what my notes read, go right ahead.
Yeah, Jerry Byrd, Bert Sarban, fully representing the owner. It's recommended for another holdover. After the last meeting, we revised the plan and mailed out registered mail to the four owners that were missing. They were the ones that are included in the PUD. We received one letter back. We have not received letters from the other three. They, the three that didn't receive their letters on October 29th, October 30th, and November 1st, they've had adequate time to respond. We feel like that we should be able to go forward and not hold this project up. Also, we have asked for lots two and three, which are being created in the subdivision and the PUD, to be removed from the PUD. Now, right now, they're vacant. There's no immediate plans for either one of these lots, so we don't know what's going on there. If we remove them, when development plans, when they sell the lot, development plans come in, we won't have to revise the PUD again, be down here doing the same thing. Staff comments were that there may be additional traffic considerations. Traffic engineering put in the first report before last meeting that the driveway number, size, location be approved by traffic engineering and conform to IHO standards. So, that covers any problems about entrance onto the site. But those two items, I think we would appreciate it being heard, see if there's anyone else here today.
Questions from commissioners before I have any questions for you, Mr. Byrd or
Jerry, are you, you're not removing any lots from the current PUD, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the four, the four property owners that are referenced are remaining in the PUD?
That's correct.
And this application is just to, the owner of lots two and three is the same as the owner of lot one?
That's right. The church is the current owner of lots two and three.
And you're saying when lots two and three are developed, you'll have to come in and do a modification?
You would if it stays in the PUD. Any changes to the PUD which would show the building, the driveways, whatever, the parking, would have to revise the PUD one more time?
And lot two and three are going to be in the PUD? So you'll, is that correct?
Yeah.
Lots two and three will be in the PUD?
They are at present, that's the reason I'm asking for them to be removed.
This application keeps them in the PUD, is that correct?
Okay, I'm confused now. So, this says the applicant is requesting to remove proposed lots two and three from the PUD. We're, so we're not removing them from the PUD?
I've asked that they be removed.
Two and three?
Yes. Two and three are the two new lots. I've asked that they be removed from the PUD that's presented with this application.
And how will they have access to Hillcrest? Me, I have that question. How, how will lots two and three have access to Hillcrest?
They front on Hillcrest.
But is, will you be able to get a curb cut? I mean, it's pretty close to the intersection.
Well, that was all under the traffic engineering comments, so location be approved by traffic Now, the CVS on the corner has a curb cut Hillcrest, lot two could have one, and then the driveway into the church property on lot one, and the lot that was created last year with this being developed right now doesn't have one, so lot three could have a curb cut onto Hillcrest, spacing them out.
The parts, the lots that have not signed off on this application, and you referenced, you sent them the certified mail, which four lots are those? Does that include the CVS and those two lots next to it?
Yes, CVS on the corner, going east, the next two lots, and then if you come south, the one that shows parking on it, yeah. Those are the four that we did not include on the original schedule.
And that was my question, Jerry, you, you sent them certified mail and you've got those dates, will you reference those dates one more time, please? Ones that you said that didn't reply?
That's right, they didn't reply. Grand Slam, which I'm not sure which one they were, I think it's, that's the new one, I think. Oh.
Yeah, that Grand Slam is the continuation of the storage unit that's on the opposite corner, so that's going to be the, the storage units right next to CVS, and then there's Rich's Car Wash, which is right next to the, the storage units there. The baseball, on the indoor hidden facility is the one that we dealt with last year, that's, that's the other one I think you're referencing.
Okay.
And if I'm correct, looking at the materials, the Grand Self-Storage is the only one that did respond and signed off on the letter, is that correct?
I'm, I'm sorry.
The, the self-storage unit?
The self-storage, I don't think they are, you say Grand Slam is next to the self-storage, it responded, they responded.
Right.
So CVS, self-storage, and the new one on Hillcrest Road, fronting on Hillcrest Road, did not respond.
And repeat those dates for me. You had the dates of the certified mail?
Yes.
What were they?
October 29th, October 30th, and November 1st is when they received them.
So, want to clarify one more time if you don't mind, the self-storage, according to the materials, they signed off as doing it, but the bat company or the baseball did not, CVS and the car wash, those are the three we're waiting on?
Grand Slam is, is the ownership, they, they responded.
Yep, okay.
What's the purpose in taking these two new lots out of the PUD?
So we won't be down here revising the PUD for each one of them as they sell and, and there's a development proposed?
Wouldn't that be a lot easier than all the, all the problems you're creating now?
No, I mean, if we take them out, if they're a legal lot of record, their site plan would be submitted to building inspection, go through planning, okay, it's approved according to the restrictions on the plan without coming back before you. And see if you take them out, I mean, that's the same as, PUDs are not required under the UDC, this is an old PUD, and there was no, no provision to delete PUDs in the UDC, they'll, they'll live forever.
The one issue that I see is that proposed lot three, you know, it has, it would have no other access other than Hillcrest. Hillcrest, obviously, we know there, there's challenges out there today. The proposed lot two, you would have an internal access there, but that proposed lot three would be?
And if you have any internal access, then he's part of the PUD, cross-access, cross-parking is one of the results of a PUD.
That's the whole purpose of that, I, I mean, I think what you, what has probably has, what looks have become unique about this one where the PUDs are often, you know, one bigger piece of property, maybe a couple of pieces with a lot of buildings, this has become a lot of different pieces of property that are part of the PUDs. I, I understand the complication there, but I mean, I think that's the whole purpose of the PUD is trying to control the development in such a way that it didn't create a whole, whole secondary, secondary of the problem. The only one that I really see the big challenge with is, is lot three, because to have access to that property, then you either have to have another curb cut on Hillcrest or it would need an easement, you know, on the, on the existing larger parcel, before the ingress, egress easement. Which would mean, which would mean you need a PUD, because you need, you need that access easement. I mean, I, I'm, I would be a little bit concerned, generally speaking, about our solution to our frustration with PUDs just being dissect, just dissect your PUD.
Agreed. Any further questions for Mr. Byrd while he's here? Clearly, he'll be here throughout the duration. Any further comments from anyone in the audience on agenda item number one, which is 6301 Greelot Road, Christ United Church West Subdivision? Reminder, sir, if you'll please state your name and address for the record, and speak clearly into the microphone.
My name is Brad Boland, and I'm representing Christ United Methodist Church as one of the staff members, or Christ United Church. Now, we, and my address is 9544 McCray Drive South. Just wanted to, to state that we're, we're for the proposal, and if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer those from our perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Boland, any commissioner questions from the applicant? All right, seeing none, thank you, Mr. Boland. Is there one here to speak against this subdivision and modification at 6301 Greelot All right, seeing none, we'll move on, we will get back to this one in deliberation. New items on the agendas, items two through 10. The first is a subdivision at 7451 Old Military Road, the Nelson Addition subdivision, this is one lot at right at a third of an acre. Is the applicant present? 7451 Old Military Road, is the applicant present? Is the applicant? Representative, are you in agreement with the eight listed conditions, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, on that application? The applicant's representation is, representative is here and in agreement with the eight listed conditions. I'll ask if there's anyone else here to speak on subdivision 7451 Old Military Road. Sir, you had your hand up? So it is your, your property and he's the representative? Got it. You're in agreement with the eight listed conditions there for this subdivision? There are eight listed conditions for this subdivision. Do you need me to dispel those out for you or you are in agreement with your representative? He's, he's in agreement. Is there anyone else here to speak against this application? All right, seeing none, we will move on. Number three, subdivision at 8,000 Foxfire Drive, Foxfire Two subdivision, this is one lot at 20 and one-third of an acre. There are six conditions listed, is the applicant present? Mr. Byrd is present, are you in agreement with the six conditions?
Yes, we are.
In agreement, is there anyone else here to speak for this application? Anyone here to speak against it? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Number four, subdivision is the east side of Wolf Ridge Road, south of Holloman Drive, the Wolf Ridge Business Park subdivision, the second phase, this is one lot at 10 and a half acres, there are nine conditions listed, is the applicant present? The applicant is present and in agreement with the nine listed conditions, and a nod of the head, he is. Is there anyone else here to speak for this subdivision on Wolf Ridge Road? Anyone here to speak against it? We will move on to agenda item, oh, sorry, was there one? If you just have questions regarding that application, please come on down, you're welcome to ask those of the commission and also, since there'll be vocal, everyone will hear them. State your name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
My name is Shannon.
Pull the microphone down a little bit.
My name is Shannon Mackey.
Yeah, into the microphone.
My name is Shannon Mackey, I live at 1812 Moore Lane, I'm Wolf Ridge, John G. Walton's neighbor, we have nine acres, and I'm just kind of wondering how this is going to affect our property.
Right, so this is?
I was hoping to see a, like my house and how this is going, you know, what exactly?
So all this is, is an application for a subdivision of, of the one lot, and if we go to, you've got the map pulled up? Turn it into, I can't see, the light's bright. It's going from one to two, but the?
Okay, is it for like new, new homes or is it big, more construction? That's what I'm wondering.
This is just, this is just lines on a map right now, so, so essentially, we're taking one big lot as it exists on the map and we're cutting it into two pieces officially.
Okay.
So, no use is being contemplated by us.
At this time, okay, thank you, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Anyone else here to speak on the application, our agenda item number four on Wolf Ridge Road? All right, number five, this is a subdivision at the north side of Height Street, at the north terminus of Glenn Street extending south of Robinson Drive, and south, west of the south terminus, terminus of Keith Street, so it's Dog River Heights subdivision. This is a subdivision of two lots at just at one-fifth of an acre, there are eight conditions listed, is the applicant present? The applicant is present, are you in agreement with the eight listed conditions? No? Okay, come on down, let's discuss specifically which one of the eight we need to address. Your name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name is, my name is John Stevens, and I'm in reference to 2157 Robinson Drive.
Okay. So which of the conditions, numbers one is dedicate to about 30 feet of the center line along Robinson Drive, is that one, usually the one? Go ahead.
Z cuts and row engineering. If you look at this, this is a very old subdivision, we were hoping that we wouldn't have, right now, the property line is fairly close to the edge of pavement on all those Any additional right of way? The lot right now still doesn't meet the standard for the minimum square footage, and if we did have to convey additional right of way, which, a little unique situation is this one's fronted on two streets, north and south, once we applied our minimum 25-foot setback from the front, it would basically kill the project as far as trying to subdivide. Obviously, there are some meets and bounds subdivisions of those same lots that's happened over time, so we would request that we not have to dedicate any additional right of
Is that the only condition that there is an issue with? First one was Robinson Drive, was it also Height Street?
It is also Height Street, yes. So it would be condition one and two.
So, so what is the existing, do we know if the existing condition is there, is it 25 feet dedicated? How, how much are we losing if we go to 30?
Well, right now, on the north, which is Robinson Drive, from the north property line to the existing center line of the road right now is 11 feet. On the south side of Height Drive, from the south property line to the existing center of pavement is 24 feet. Of existing pavement, that's correct. And we're requesting 30, so that's six feet there.
That's a, your front?
20 feet on the north side.
The front's going to continue to remain on, I guess Robinson, correct?
I'm sorry.
The front of the house, whatever's constructed is going to be fronted towards Robinson, I guess, correct?
Yes, the idea would be to split the lot in half and have one house face north, one house face south.
But either way, you're asking for the waiver of the 30 foot, I guess, on both, both streets?
That is correct.
I think for it to make sense too, we would need a waiver from, we'd need that on either side, if you have to pull up the, pull up the, the site plan that shows just the site, not that one though, the one that's yellow, one more. That one. Yeah, see how the, the right of way jogs down from the, from the north of the property, so if he dedicated it to, to the south, I mean, in theory, we have places where right of way does that, but you would really, ultimately, the properties on either side would be that same, ultimately, that same jog at some point, so it is kind of a conundrum right there.
Any further questions or comments from commissioners regarding the applicant's request on number one and number two as far as conditions to be removed?
I guess question for staff, and Nick as well, I assume no plans to widen either of these two roads in the foreseeable future?
No, no, yeah, no, no for the roadway, I mean.
All right, I'll ask if there's anyone else in the audience to, to speak for this agenda item at Dog River Heights subdivision of one lot to two? Is there one here to speak against it? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item number six. This is a subdivision at 5340, 5344, and 5348, Highway 90 West, and numerous addresses at Neveous Road, and then 4575 and 4589 Hermitage Avenue, Tillman's Corner Development subdivision. This is an application for four lots at just under seven acres, there are 12 listed conditions, is the applicant present? The applicant is present, are you in agreement with the 12 listed conditions or want to discuss any of them? Come on down, a reminder to please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Garrett Baker, 3262 Old Shell Road. One of the engineering comments called out a sidewalk fronting every one of the lots. We would argue that there are not any other sidewalks in the vicinity and that would be a major cost burden for the development.
Was there, I'll ask staff, there's a sidewalk waiver application as part of this subdivision application?
No, sir, we have not submitted one, no.
And, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
This was voluntarily annexed into the city as well, right?
Yes.
And do about the UDC code and all that fun stuff before, I guess, just want to point that out.
Garrett, is the, you asking for, I guess, is your concern about sidewalks along Neveous and Highway 90 or internally within the project?
Well, sir, I read the comment is front, the frontage of the property, so I assume that would be along Neveus and Highway 90. You know, the Chick-fil-A lot, I don't know how you can make a sidewalk work going around that one, so I guess we're going to have to submit a waiver request for that.
The sidewalk issue is not before us today, we'd have to approve the subdivision and then they would have to file a sidewalk waiver application.
All right, any further questions or comments from commissioners for Mr. Baker? I'll ask if there's anyone else here to speak for this agenda item, Tillman's Corner, Katie Tillman's Corner subdivision. Anyone here to speak against it? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to number seven, it's a rezone application of R1 to B2, my notes read, planning commission for a holdover potential for December 19th meeting, question staff, that's still appropriate, is the applicant present on this rezone This would be, the potential holdover would allow the rezoning application to be heard concurrently with the proposed subdivision. Are you in agreement with that, sir? The applicant is present and in agreement with that proposed holdover. Any comments from staff on this? And since it's on the agenda, I'll ask if there's anyone else in the audience that needs to speak for or against this rezone application? Yes, sir. Again, it's proposed to be held over to begin concurrent with the proposed subdivision, but you're here so you can go ahead and make questions or ask questions or make comments, be careful. Name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is Dennis Rich, I'm owner of 5805 and 58, 510, I'm sorry, 5105. I'm sorry, that's the wrong address. Is this Overlook Road? Okay, I'm the wrong one, it's the wrong, I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, well, that'll be agenda item number 10, Mr. Rich. Anyone else here to speak for or against this agenda item on a proposed rezone that is now potentially held over until December? All right, moving on, we'll go to agenda item number eight, southeast, this is a rezone at the southeast corner of Commerce Boulevard East and Commerce Boulevard West, a rezone from Office Distribution District B5 to Single Residential Suburban R1. Consideration for commissioners, there are seven findings of facts listed, and then for subdivision, there are four conditions, is the applicant present? Am I missing it? This is a rezone Commerce Boulevard East and West.
Should I correct me if I'm wrong, but just, I got a call from city attorney's office earlier this week, they requested, the request is going to be for a holdover because the property being rezoned to R1 is going to be increased down toward the south, they're going to add more from B5 to R1, and they were told they're going to have to have the holdover to submit a new applications, a revised application, is that correct?
Correct, a hold, a holdover expecting that a forthcoming application would be coming down the pipe. Correct, a hold, a holdover expecting that a forthcoming application would be coming down the pipe.
So, so there, you said moving it to the south, you mean expanding it to the south?
I, I think if I'm correct that, um, the, uh, with the expansion of the R one, um, part of that might be sent over to some sort of, uh, I guess easement, natural easement or something, so I think that just growing that, that side is part of the, the deal.
All right, so no applicant present for confirmation of, uh, any items here and staff commenting?
First, how long would it need to be held over if they're gonna have to revise for a rezoning, if they're gonna re-advertise since they're adding any land?
Uh, that is my understanding that they're gonna have to
Mine too.
Yeah, um, timeline I'm not completely clear on.
Two months, one month?
Paperwork for, paperwork for December nineteenth would be
For the December meeting.
Okay.
So paperwork deadline December sixth, December nineteenth, potential, I'll, I'll ask staff what December's agenda looks like thus far with the potential of added. Okay.
So are they gonna have, is, is applicant gonna have anybody here? I mean, is, is the city council attorney over here if there's questions?
Um, so I, I will be abstaining from this because I believe that this is a cumbersome process and there's a simpler way to do it. Um, so, uh, uh, that would be a question for the council attorney.
Since it's on the agenda, anyone here to speak for or against the rezone at Commerce Boulevard East or West? All right. Next on the agenda is a subdivision at seventy-eight fifty-eight, seventy-eight sixty and seventy-nine hundred Ziegler Boulevard. So sidewalk waiver along Ziegler. Commissioners have three conditions listed for that, is the applicant, Mr. Byrd?
Yes, Jerry Byrd, Bert's Rowan. Asked for the sidewalk waiver. Currently, there's a building being constructed on the east side of the property in question. Should finish up in January, possibly February. Sidewalk would have to be in place at that point. Now, this section of Ziegler Boulevard is being designed. Uh, I'm told it's an Aldot project, project in conjunction with Mobile County. They expect it maybe to go underbid in a year and a half and take, I don't know, two or three years, taking forever on the other sections of Ziegler Boulevard. But first thing they're gonna do when they let the contract is clear everything within the right of way. So if we have to build a sidewalk, it's gonna get torn out. The finished, well, and also existing today, the pavement in front of the property is approximately two, two and a half feet higher than the property. There's an open ditch, drainage ditch, uh, side drain. And in the final, uh, plans from what I'm shown on the cross-sections and provided by McCrory and Williams engineers, the pavement's gonna, might drop down about a half a foot. But in where there's not driveways going into our property, it's gonna be an open ditch there also. So sidewalk does not appear to be a good thing to put in. It'd be a total waste of time and money to build one in January or February and have it torn out a year and a half later. Um, and then it'll be, you know, probably four or five years before they ever finish the construction anyway. That's it.
All right, this is, I don't see a larger on the existing zoning maps of anything other than industrial. Am I wrong there? It's, it's just a big industrial area along Ziegler right there.
And Jay, I'll just point out for the record that the plan sheets shown in the application materials show a ten-foot sidewalk, albeit on the, uh, south side of Ziegler, so there will at least be some means for non-vehicular traffic along this corridor.
All right, any further questions or comments from commissioners on the sidewalk waiver application at Ziegler Boulevard? All right, thank you, Mr. Byrd, I'll ask if there's anyone else in the, in the audience that wants to speak for or against the sidewalk waiver? All right, seeing none. Final agenda item is a dual application at fifty-three oh one Moffett Road. This is Overlook Cargo Connection subdivision. Uh, the subdivision has ten conditions listed. And the rezone from B, this would be a neighborhood business suburban district B two to an office distribution district of B five. And part of the rezone, we would have seven potential findings of fact for commissioners and then four listed conditions. The applicant's present, go ahead, sir.
Uh, Bruce Smith, Coles Murphy Glover, four fifty-seven St. Michael Street, uh, we have no objection to the, uh, conditions for the subdivision. Um, for the, for the zoning application, we're, we're looking at this and hoping to, to zone from a B two to a B five. Um, the current, current, uh, site has, uh, retail on it, uh, for years. Um, the, the property on the, the buildings on the west side, um, they, the owners have seeked to, to get some clients and there's some, some tenants in there to, you know, some long-term leases, but it has not been successful just with the, kind of the way the, the way the retail market is right now. There's, don't really have that much need for big, big stores like that, especially in this area. A lot of the retail has kind of moved along Moffett and, and University to easier, easier accessible sites. This site is, uh, I don't know if you've been by there, but it's kind of down in a hole, it's not really convenient for, uh, commercial traffic to get in there. Um, so we really believe the, the best use for this property would, would be for, um, a, a warehouse. And so that's why we're seeking the B five zoning, um, to go to a sixty thousand, uh, square foot warehouse on the west side of the property. Uh, the two buildings on the west side would be demolished, they're approximately thirty-one thousand square feet. Um, so that's, that's what we're hoping to do, I mean, we just really think the way that Mobile's growing, uh, you kind of have a more of a need for, for some warehouse space, I mean, it's been well documented, the, the need for increase in warehouse space in Mobile. Um, next to Moffett Road and University and Overlook, um, you know, two, two principal arteries for the city of Mobile that have easy access in and out. Um, I know some of the traffic was, was listed as maybe potential issues, we've reached out to Aldot, they've reviewed the plans. Uh, they have no issues with what we've proposed. Um, that the north entrance would be just a truck entrance only, it would not be uh, available for exit for the, for the trucks, they would all exit onto Overlook. Um, like we said, that's a pretty steep incline right there, so we don't want the trucks, uh, entering out on the Moffett on that road. Um, this come to our attention, uh, uh, even from some of the city staff that sometimes trucks do get stuck on there. I mean, that's why we wanna, we wanna get them off of, off of Moffett. Uh, you know, from exit on to Moffett and off, and exit on the, Overlook. So, um, if, uh, if y'all have any questions for us on, on what we plan to do, we'd, uh, we'd be happy to, happy to answer them. Um, I believe Jane and, and they, they can, they can talk to a little bit more maybe about, um, the, the history in the past of, of trying to get some retails into this site. And that's just, uh, kind of what this area is going to, so. We had a meeting with the, with the neighborhood, uh, had a neighborhood meeting, actually had two of them. Um, and there wasn't a very large turnout, but the, the ones that did come, they actually seemed pretty, uh, pretty positive about the development of, uh, of the, of the site and, and demoing the vacant buildings and turning the project, or turning the site into a useful project that could kind of bring some, uh, bring some value to the community, so.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, I'll point out, uh, that we have a comment, uh, online submission for commissioners, it's in your notes on your iPad, and I'll ask if any commissioners have any questions for Mr. Smith or comments for the project, again, this is a dual application subdivision and rezone.
Mr. Chairman, just, just a comment, and this is for the engineering staff as well. Uh, that's Sawata Drive, that adjacent neighborhood, uh, in large rain events, there have been some challenges, uh, from drainage coming off from this site, so.
Okay.
Uh, you know, I would ask that y'all, you know, if this is moved forward, that you work with engineering staff, you know, to address that drainage appropriately.
Absolutely.
Jay, I've got a question, I guess, um, you know, in reading the application, so last month, this site came before BZA for a special exception to construct a warehouse larger than forty thousand square feet in B three. Um, obviously, this is currently B two, so I guess, I guess help the commission understand why now all of a sudden the request to go to B five when it seemed preemptively that there would be satisfaction with the special exemption in B three?
Sure, sure, so from the very beginning, the goal was to obtain B five zoning for the site, I mean, we really believe that that's probably the best use for it, for, for the warehouse. Um, in meeting with the staff in the pre-development meeting, um, it was suggested to, to go ahead and apply for that, uh, uh, exception. Um, in case a B three was approved. Um, that being said, you know, the, there's other properties on this site. And in the future, if, if the retail that is currently in there now and, and does not work out and that tenant leaves, then, um, you know, that we have the potential, if we have a B five, to do something else on that, on that site as well as far as the warehouse goes. If we're, if we're, you know, if we're held to the B three, we would be stuck with having to come back before, uh, for, for another exception, um, for, for the B three, for the, with the BZA, so, um, that's, that's why we would, we would like to stick with the B five because like we've said before, this is, we believe that's the best use for the property, we never really sought out the B three, we just, we filed that with, as a, um, I guess as a backup with the city of Mobile or the, the planning staff as kind of contingency plan.
That answer your question, Mr. Nichols? All right, this time I'll ask if there's anyone else in the audience that is here to speak for this agenda item. Dual application at fifty-three oh one Moffett Road subdivision and rezone from B two to B five. Speak for it? Absolutely, so now we'll ask if anybody has any regular questions towards the agenda item or against it, so, sir, yeah, come on down. Yes, sir, please. A reminder, state your name and address for the record.
George Houston, fifteen twenty Sawata Drive. I am basically right behind where this is gonna be built, okay?
Yes, sir.
Um, my first question is, how will this proposal be an improvement to the supround, surrounding neighborhood overall? When you tear down what's there and you put up a sixty thousand foot, square foot warehouse? Second, the truck entrance there at Moffett Road that goes down in there, will, is Aldot gonna go in there and just rebuild that whole intersection? So the semis don't get stuck, so their trailers, the landing gear is not stuck in that, you know, on the roadway and they blocking traffic, eastbound traffic, westbound traffic? Police have to get out there and direct traffic? Has, have, is Aldot gonna do that? I'm sorry, is Aldot gonna be, you know, rebuilding that intersection? Then, your exits are shown as Overlook Road. Overlook Road is basically a two-lane road there. You're gonna bring tractor-trailers out of there, make them turn onto Overlook and then probably go up and make another left turn or keep going right on out Overlook to get on eastbound ninety-eight, okay? Or they're gonna have to go up the University Loop and then figure out if they're gonna go eastbound or westbound on ninety-eight. So, also, another point about this, uh, what, what is going to be in this warehouse? What kind of goods are we gonna be distributing, will be distributed from there? That's what I'm wondering. You know, you've got six bay, eighteen by eighteen foot bay doors out there. You've got six, uh, you know, employee entrances out there, doors there. And across the back, you've got louvers that are almost ground level and you've got eight exhaust fans across the top of it. That's what it's showing. So I'm wondering, okay, what is gonna be in this warehouse that those things are needed, especially when you're gonna be putting louvers ar- along the back of the building, you know? What times will work be going on there? Is it gonna be daytime? Will deliveries and pickups be made in the daytime? Is it gonna be at nighttime? Because goodness knows, we don't wanna hear trucks backing up and we're just hearing beep, 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 you know, throughout the night. When Del Champs was there, which is one of the buildings that is proposed to be, uh, demolished, which I think lasted been a Walgreens, well, my parents were living in that house. And that's what they heard, you know, Del Champs rolled in, dropped a trailer, they heard that and then heard him hook up and taking, you know, an empty trailer out. And this was not just once a week, this was several times a week. So I'm just, I just had these questions, that was it. But especially about that truck entrance, because if that doesn't work out, if that's not rebuilt from what it is right now, it's gonna still be a traffic hazard. That's why you don't see semis going in there except drivers who don't know exactly where they are and not realizing all they have to do is go further up to Howell's Ferry Road and there's a shopping center there, you know, where they can make an easy turnaround there. So these are just a few questions I had, okay? Maybe, and I missed the meeting, I missed the meeting that they had at the Forest Hill Church of God. Unfortunately, I didn't have that on my calendar and I totally forgot about it, so I'm at fault for that. So I'm probably not gonna get those answers now that I have just asked. But, you know, uh, I'm not saying that I'm against it, but I do wanna know what's be going, what will be going on there. And then maybe I could say, well, okay, now I'm for it, all right? But my yard, the fence, the trees, the stormwater ditch, there, that is a problem right there. Now, I don't know what the proposal is for the stormwater running off behind that building. Are they gonna come in and build, put in concrete flumes? Are they gonna, you know, rebuild the stormwater inlet that goes into the piping, the stormwater piping that goes between two of my neighbor's houses? And then comes out of the creek further down, okay? So, anyway, I hope everything's taken into consideration before y'all say yes or no to this, but especially before y'all say yes to this. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Houston. And you're in the right spot for a public hearing to address those questions if you were able to, not able to make the meeting. I'll ask if there's anyone, you're, you're good to go.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Have questions concerning this project or like to speak against it? All right. We'll have a chance for the applicant to make, uh, any rebuttals towards those questions. So, Mr. Smith, welcome you back down, you'll have a two-minute period to address any of those concerns and of course commissioners can ask any other questions as well, thank you.
Yeah, Bruce Smith, Coles Murphy Glover again, and hopefully I can remember all the concerns.
A little bit closer if you don't mind.
Oh, I'm sorry. So as far as the interest goes, we did send the plans to Aldot and they have no concern about that as far as the trucks coming in. I believe most of the concern was the trucks trying to come out. Um, we will work with Aldot, if something needs to be made, we'll, we'll, we'll work through that with them. Uh, as far as stormwater goes, um, there'll be no increase in impervious surface, there's actually gonna be a very large uh, residential buffer on the west side of the property. Um, so there actually be an increase in, uh, green space on the, on the site, so we will, we'll be reducing the overall stormwater generated by the site. Um, and we'll do what we can to mitigate that away from, to get that away from the west side. Uh, as far as the, what's gonna be stored in the facility right now, there's no designated tenants right now. It was kind of the idea of a, of a shell, so we don't really know exactly what, what would be stored in there. Um, the, uh, the, the noise, um, so the Del Champs building, the trucks, I believe, uh, you know, loaded in the, in the rear of the property on the west side of the facility. So that's one of the reasons why we have all of the bays facing east away from the residential, uh, neighborhood to the, to the west, so. All the, all the bays, all, every, every, every overhead door that we have is on the east side of the property. Uh, there'll be no cranes or no heavy machinery inside other than just, you know, your typical forklifts for, for warehouses. Will not be an industrial site where they're gonna be manufacturing anything, uh, just storage. Um, was it, did I miss anything else? As, as far as improvement to the neighborhood, um, right now, I believe there's a, there's a small homeless, homeless population that sometimes hangs around there. The other people that were at the, the neighborhood meeting were glad that we were gonna build a building that would be used, that would have, uh, security cameras, that would be monitored and maintained and hopefully, uh, take care of that issue.
Mr. Houston mentioned the, the air vents on the roof and the louvers and the, on the west side, that's just for basic ventilation, is that correct?
That's, that's right. Not, not, not for any kind of fumes or anything that would be generated in there, it's just basic ventilation, you know, for humidity purposes.
And since this is B five, we can confirm, can't we, that no hazardous material can be stored in this facility?
Yeah.
Any further questions or comments from commissioners, from Mr. Smith? Uh, I think there was a question for Mr. Houston, you may or may not know the answer to this question as far as contents. As you, if you don't know the answer to that, that's fine.
The, the contents?
Yeah.
And, no, I mean, we, we don't, we don't know what tenant would, would have them, just, you know, there, there's no way to really know.
And my question for staff, and also Mr. Smith might need to know this as well, is there, uh, any hours of operation requirements for B five?
No, sir, um, but with the special exception, it did place specific requirements that they have to meet. Um, hence why staff, um, more or less suggested the B three zoning designation versus the B five. And a B five, anything that's in a lot of the, in a And a B five, anything that's in a lot of, in a B five is allowed, you can't do anything about it. Versus a special exception, which Mr. Bruce said, uh, any additional warehousing space that wanted to come to that property, it would reengage with the neighborhood, bring it back to a public hearing.
All right. And then you, you made a note earlier in your comments on the, the vegetation buffer of thirty feet.
That's right.
All right, between the warehouse, uh, and the, and the, the neighborhood.
As, as well as a new fence. I, I believe there's a fence there, but it's chain linked, so this one would be, meet the standard U D C codes for the, for the buffer. And, and also, I, I would say, I know that traffic, you know, we mentioned traffic, I think we, we were anticipating about six trips a day. Um, that, that's way below the, the traffic that you would see for the Del Champs that was previously there for that, for that area and intersection, so just something else.
All right, any further questions for the applicant? Comments from commissioners?
Yeah, I was, the, I mean, you touched on this earlier, but the, just reviewing the staff report, uh, and given what was just said about the action by the B Z A, what you're, can you explain your argument for going to B five as opposed to just B three?
So, so if we go to B five in the, in the future?
It, it's future use.
In, in, future use. And, and, and I'll say this too, and I, I think, uh, the, the, the owner would agree. I mean, like you said, if we go to a B five, then that opens us up to other uses that would be, we would, we would be willing to, some of the, there's not very many uses for a B five that, I mean, really, there, there's a lot of uses for a B three that would, that people would not want, whereas for a B five, you can't have. So, I mean, if there's a, if there's uses that are, um, a particular concern for the, for the, uh, commission, then we would be willing to, to look at that and place a restriction on the property to be approved for the B five, but with the restriction of not, not having that use in the future.
Questions or comments, commissioners? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This time we'll now close the deliberation, excuse me, the, uh, public hearing session, we'll move into deliberation. We go back to agenda item number one, which was a holdover of a dual application of subdivision and modification. Mr. Byrd was present. Mr. Byrd was requesting, uh, moving forward with the original application as opposed to a holdover. And we find ourselves in deliberation. Comments from staff requiring this, or any questions or comments from commissioners?
You know, if, if we hold it over, I think we're going to be in the same spot next month that we're in now. Um, appears to be two issues, the lack of consent from the four,
Three.
Other lots, three lots,
Yeah.
Um, that, uh, have not consented to this. And then removing the two lots, the two new lots from the PUD. For the first issue, um, yes, the PUD, the old PUD, uh, under the old zoning ordinance, required all owners within the PUD to consent to any change, any change. And we developed a policy the last year or so, um, that if there was a change that did not have a negative impact on the owners that have not consented. Like if somebody on their lot wanted to change parking or location of their, uh, dumpster or whatever, change a curb cut on, on their particular lot within a PUD, um, we would let it go because it was unfair to let the other owners have so much control over the other owners. Um, so the way I analyze this is, does removing these two lots from the PUD have any negative impact on those three non-consenting owners? Uh, you don't have to follow that, you can say, you can require the, um, uh, the consent. But we've tried to be user-friendly and business-friendly and, and, and kind of worked at, looked at it that way. Uh, now, the, removing the two lots, to me, is a more, a bigger concern just because of access. Uh, the access for the future is uncertain. So, that's how I look at this from a legal viewpoint.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I just, uh, I, I mean, I, that's still, the kind of sticking with that concern of that, I guess that's lot three, the bottom, the south one. Um, that, uh, I mean, the traffic's already ridiculous there. I, I know that, uh, I've, I've been dealing and fielding issues from, uh, Sugar Creek across the, across the way there, um, regarding just, uh, traffic there. I, I think, um, you know, without the ability of tying in whatever we go in that, that new lot and, and, and trying to maybe use that, that other access point that's already there. I, that, that's just my biggest concern is, um, is adding another curb cut, adding another business, um, that's going to have to dump out on Hillcrest and then, and an already deadly area there.
My, my comment was almost exactly the same, you know, I think if, if there was, uh, access across that lot one to lot three, uh, you know, I wouldn't have the concern because Hillcrest is the challenge there. The access is, uh, having more curb, curb cuts along there. Uh, yeah, it's, it's just challenging the lot two appears to have access, there's, appears to be, uh, you know, side and rear accesses to it. So, uh, lot two, if it were to come to, for permitting, it likely would not be, uh, issued a permit along Hillcrest. Uh, where lot three would have, it would have no other choice but to have access on Hillcrest. So, um, if, if that hurdle could be overcome, I, I would feel, feel much better about the application. So, I don't know what the, if the applicant might want to, uh, reconsider, uh, that holdover, uh, and see if he might want to work with that property owner, see if that's a, see if that's a possibility. Uh, I suspect that, can't speak with this entire board, but I think that at least a few of us would feel a lot better about it if that, that access could be better, better addressed.
Any further comments or questions for commiss, from commissioners?
Doug, if we, with regard to lot two, even if we took that out of the PUD for it to get access on the east side, we would still have to come back and amend this PUD, wouldn't we, to give that access to it?
I think so, um, because like we mentioned earlier, cross-access means a PUD. And, um, it's like a, a shopping center, uh, it's, it's part of a PUD. So, i- if he's, if lot two is going to have access across lot one, then the PUD regulations would-
We're not solving anything.
No, no. Yeah, I agree with what Nick said, getting a curb cut on lot two, I think, would be tough with the current situation, um, of having access across those easements in, within the PUD.
And I have to believe that the entrance, the, the main entrance into the, what was the original big parcel, was really intended to be one primary point of access for all of the, for all of the access. Uh, in, in hypothetical, that lot three had rear access, then you, you probably wouldn't, you probably could take the lot two and lot three out of the PUD. You probably could take everything out of the, out of the PUD except maybe the remaining lot one, because realistically, the only thing that would end up on lot two and lot three is probably just one building. You know, maybe a, you know, maybe a little out structure for, for a, uh, dumpster or something. But it's not like you're going to have multiple buildings on, on lot two or in lot three, there's just not, not physically enough room.
Wrong button, sorry. Uh, so if we don't do the dissection of the PUD, is there a point in doing the subdivision? Are, are those separate? Wait, are, do we still want to do the subdivision if there's no PUD? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, he, he can, that way they could sell off that property, they would still be within the PUD.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll take them separately unless there's further questions or comments from commissioners. Go ahead.
Mr. Byrd, if we, you're fine, would you have any reason not to go forward with the subdivision? In the event the PUD is unapproved or this modification is unapproved?
Modification is not approved. We're these lots there, keep them in the PUD if necessary, and control it with that.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the subdivision, subject to staff recommendations.
Doug? We have a motion and a second to approve the subdivision, subject to staff recommendations. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for the subdivision passes. Entertain a motion on the modification.
Move to deny the modification.
Motion to deny, properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion for denial passes. Thank you for working on that. New items, subdivision number two on the agenda, seventy-four fifty-one Old Military Road. The applicant was present and in agreement with the eight listed conditions. Entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion for subdivision passes. Number three, subdivision at eight thousand Foxfire Drive. The applicant was present and in agreement with the six listed conditions.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations. Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion for subdivision passes. Number four, east side of Wolf Ridge Road, south of Holloman Drive, the Wolf Ridge Business Park subdivision. The applicant was present and in agreement with the nine listed conditions.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations. Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion for subdivision passes. Number five, subdivision at the north side of Height Street, terminus of Glenn, south side of Robinson, west of the south terminus of Keith Street, Dog River Height subdivision. The applicant, Mr. Stevens, was present and, um, requested conditions number one and number two. Center line, removal of Robinson and center line, thirty feet center line, uh, dedication on Height Street. Entertain a motion or discussion by commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I think Nick called this a conundrum, so I think Nick should come up with a solution.
Okay, I, I'd, I'd move to approve, subject to staff, staff recommendations, uh, striking, uh, number one and number two.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for subdivision with removal of conditions one and two passes. Number six on the agenda, this is Highway ninety west, Nevis Road and Hermitage Avenue, Tillman's Corner, Katie Tillman's Corner. Mr. Baker, had comments, we also have, uh, applicant, or the applicant present in an agreement with twelve listed conditions.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations. Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion for the subdivision passes. Number seven, it's been recommended for holdover on a rezone from, uh, R one to B two at fifty-one oh five and oh, fifty-one oh nine and fifty-one eleven overlook road. That would be a December nineteenth holdover.
So moved. Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion for holdover passes to December nineteenth. Application paperwork due by December, or any modifications, December sixth. Number eight on the agenda is a, um, rezone southwest, southeast corner of Commerce Boulevard East and Commerce Boulevard West. Also, uh, potential, we did not have an applicant present, but also potential holdover December nineteenth. Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion for holdover to December nineteenth passes with application or modification paperwork due by December sixth.
Mr. Chair, I just want to note that I abstain from that vote.
Thank you. Will there be any, uh, changes to the vote based on that extension? Okay, this motion still passes. Uh, number nine, subdivision sidewalk waiver at seventy-eight fifty-eight, seventy-eight sixty and seventy-nine hundred Ziegler Boulevard. Mr. Byrd stated his case with request to approve the sidewalk waiver. If commissioners agree or disagree, entertain a motion.
Move to approve the request. Second.
That's a move to approve the request of the sidewalk waiver. Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number ten, dual application, we'll take them separately, the subdivision and then the rezone. At fifty-three oh one Moffett Road, the overlook cargo connection subdivision. For the subdivision, there are ten conditions listed, of which the applicant is present and in agreement.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations. Second.
Properly moved and seconded on the subdivision of the property. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for the subdivision passes. Second part of the application is a rezone from B two to B five. The applicant is present and addressed the commissioner's concerns with respect to B two versus B three versus B five. Entertain a motion.
I have, I have a question. So, functionally, they can, they could do B three with what they have in this application, right?
That's correct, because they have a special exception.
Yeah, with a B Z A exception. Um, and then, the, would, would B five be, I mean, would B five lead to, you know, potential uses that would be more noxious to the adjoining neighbors?
Uh, potentially, yes, simply because it's an office distribution district. So it has a, um, um, less restriction, so to speak, than a B three.
And I was trying to pull up the, the U D C, I couldn't, I couldn't get it open on here. But, so with, I, one of the things that, uh, the first gentleman mentioned were, was, was regard to operating hours. Does B three have an operating hour situation that B five doesn't have?
No, sir.
Okay.
But that was the exception they asked, right? That was part of the, the B Z A.
It's part of the special exception, they did not put in conditions with respect to their hours of operation. But again, future changes to that would have to go back to the B Z A, assuming B three's, um, classification that was approved by the planning commission, at which time they could add those conditions.
Okay, I, I would move to recommend, uh, B three zoning to the city council.
We have a notion on the floor, we need a second for B three?
Second.
We need findings of fact.
What was that?
We need findings of, yeah, for the justification.
On the rezone with findings of fact, of which for consideration, seven plus three, four conditions.
Great point. Uh, I'll include, amend my motion to include findings of fact, A through G.
We have an amended motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded for B three. Any discussion?
Actually, I, I have one question. Uh, I just thought about the B Z A, uh, application, uh, or decision to allow more than forty thousand square feet. Was that for the entire site or just for the proposed subdivided lot? So is it for the entire parcel? Is that your understanding?
So the special exception was just for the building that's proposed, because it is going to be for more than forty thousand square feet, which requires special exception in a B three zoning district. So, uh, Mr. Smith's correct in that if any other warehouse is going to be proposed on that site, they have to first get approval to amend a special exception to allow additional warehouse from the board of zoning adjustment.
Okay, that answered my question. Thank you.
We have a properly moved and seconded motion for, uh, B three. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes for B three.
Hold on, hold on, we got, we got to go back and visit number one.
We do?
Yeah, um, we were all, I think, at least I was, uh, proceeding-
Yeah, um, we were all, I think, at least I was, uh, proceeding under the thought because of the staff report under holdover comments, it says it should be noted that the applicant is requesting to remove proposed lots two and three from the PUD. That's not the case, that we looked at the application and the application just said, add those two, you know, create those two lots and modify the PUD, creating those two extra lots. So actually, we need to, there, there's no request before y'all to remove lots. Um, so we need to go back and, and revote or revisit the vote on, um, the PUD modification. And since we approved the subdivision, we need to approve that part of the PUD, hi- his application to amend the PUD.
So, okay, I stay.
Is that correct?
I'm, I'm still confused about this, I'm just confused, I'm more confused now than I was earlier.
It's, all, all it is is creating two more lots within the PUD.
Or adding them to the PUD?
Let me, I'll clarify, so, yeah.
This site.
He's, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Uh, this site, as it is, the boundaries that you see, um, is part of an originally approved PUD. Mr. Bird or the applicant rather, is attempting to, from that site, create two additional lots. So they're altering lot lines of that overall site, but it remains within the site, which is the PUD. So in order to amend that, those lot lines, the PUD also has to be amended to follow those lot lines. Does that make more sense?
Yeah, the, and, yeah, that's, okay. I was completely confused when you were down here the first time, Mr. Bird, yeah. No, that, like, yeah, that makes a lot, this whole thing makes a lot more sense. Because I was trying to figure out, what are we doing?
Do, do we need to make a motion to, to rescind that previous vote for that? I'll, I'll make that motion, second.
We got to address the owner authorization too.
So are we keeping them in the PUD or not? I'm con, I'm still confused, because I couldn't hear you very well, we are keeping them in the PUD, okay.
Who's the motion and second? Okay. We have a, a properly seconded motion to rescind the prior approval on the modification. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for rescind passes. Now, I'll entertain a new motion, but I do want to point out, does this have any concern? Is it, should there be any concern with the provision of the owner authorization, of which only 25% have approved or signed off on it? Does that have any bearing on this new motion that should come?
Because my opinion has no legal impacts, it's not changing access, parking or anything concerning those other four lots or three lots.
Our legal has spoken, entertain a motion.
And those are the lots to the north. Right, okay. I guess in, in this case, because it's a PUD, the subdivision is, is requiring us to modify the PUD. So, so it's just, they require two because it's in the PUD. But make a motion to approve the modification request.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded for the modification. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. I think that's the first time that's ever happened. Any further business discussion or business items for us? Alright, I'll, I'll wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, safe travels to those traveling and, uh, hug the people that you think you'd like or don't like.